I'd like to call the order of the Yowon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 4th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Jim Burke, who passed away about two and a half weeks ago. And our thoughts also go out to Mayor Robert Garcia for the passing of his mother Gabby O'Donnell. Please be seated. We just have the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have quite a few announcements this evening. First one is just to remind the public, City Hall's hours. City Hall is open to the public from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. We are still closed on Fridays. We have started vehicle pickup, vehicle registration from the last two weeks of March where we stopped. And so we are giving the public all the way through the end of August to come in and pick up the stickers that they might have already paid for, or to get their sticker on their vehicle. And just come up to City Hall on Monday through Thursday between 8:30 and 11:30. And on August 2nd, we will start ticketing. So we're trying to get the...
You mean September 2nd?
Sorry. Yeah, what did I say, Michael? September. We'll start ticketing. So we're trying, I think there's about 450 to 500 vehicles still out there that still need to get their registration. We are asking the public to please take the time to do the census for us. It's very important. We are also trying to figure out a way so when people come up to do their vehicle registration that we might be able to assist them with their census. Just a reminder that the DMV that was scheduled to come at the end of August is no longer coming. We do not have a new date for that. And to remind the public that we are having a scheduled budget study session on Wednesday, August 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I know Bob Greenlaw might talk about this also, but to warn the public that on Wednesday morning at 6:00 a.m., they're going to hear loud noises. And we are trying to make a repair down by our Catherine lift station. And so there's going to be a lot of noise. We can only do it during extreme low tide. So they're going to be moving equipment around 5:30 in the morning and then starting the work at 6:00. And they only have a real short window to do it.
And no water's going to be shut off?
No, salt water will be turned off, no. And then also, just to note, because the mayor had asked me the question, we did post signs on the beaches about not putting towels down until 7:30 in the morning. And the purpose of that was to give Public Works time to clean the beaches. And otherwise, they were picking up towels and putting them in the wrong spots, and people were getting upset. So it's just easier for our crew to just be able to get in and get out.
Yes.
That's all I have.
And Department head reports. Comes Mr. Greenlaw.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, couple items. As City Manager mentioned, we're going to be doing that work on the saltwater intake line tomorrow morning. And we advise the community that there is going to be some noise early in the morning. And we regret that, but we're taking advantage of that low tide. And we don't see another favorable tide for the next few weeks. So we need to get in there and get that work done. All the parts are in place. The hole has been excavated. And we're going to make that final cut on the pipe tomorrow morning with, for the piece of pipe that goes under the seawall there, and get that replaced with a couple of couplings and a new piece of pipe. And hopefully that rehabilitates that piece of pipe and stops the vacuum leak. There should be no shutdown in water. The reservoirs are full by the time early in the morning. And that's what really supplies all the water for the town. The pipe that we're repairing actually supplies the reservoirs, and we turn when they're down. We also had a field review with the Coastal Commission today, so they finally came in and it was great. There was four people from the Coastal Commission, and there was five of us from city staff, including Mike Palmer, J.J. Poindexter, Jordan Moreau, and myself, and the consultants, Michael Thomas and Walt Crampton. And they joined us looking at the projects, the Pebble Beach Road revetment project, Baltimore projects, the South Beach projects, both the seawall and the dredging, the green pier maintenance, and the club dock pier replacement. And we talked about all of those projects. And it was a great coordination meeting. And they said, hey, they're going to be back. But we made some good strides in getting an understanding of what we needed to do for all those projects, where we could help streamline it. And we've, I think, really built partnership with them as of today. We spent about six hours together.
Right.
So that was great. Any questions?
Just on that saltwater intake, that replacement part, is that, was that an old, 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 old piece, or?
So that pipe, I think, is probably the second set of pipe that's been in there. It's a, I think it was maybe replaced in the 90s. I don't have the exact history on it, but it's Schedule 80 PVC. It's high quality. There is a chunk of concrete that holds the pipe that goes out about 300 feet into the harbor, and it holds it down. And it's about 75 feet offshore. What I'm thinking is that when some of the heavy wave action happens, it actually is pulling on that block, and it's just by inch by inch, pulling that pipe apart right at the seawall. Because they're glued couplings, and they're big couplings that are on there right now, about 24-inch long, 12 inches diameter. So they're pretty huge couplings. But what happened is the pipe, the coupling right out the seawall, it retracted out of the coupling.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's what we're repairing. We tried to repair it in place with some other couplings previously, and that wasn't successful. That's why we had to dig the whole piece up and put a new piece of pipe there and get that coupling out from underneath the wall.
Yeah.
That was not a great, great place to install that coupling for the next guys, which is us.
Okay. Thank you. If, no questions of Bob? No.
Good evening. Captain John Hawking, Sheriff's Department. I just wanted to remind people about drunk driving. We had two noteworthy arrests this week. One, a suspect allegedly stole a golf cart from Descanso Beach Club, was intoxicated, crashed it into the casino pillars, and ran from the scene. Deputies were able to apprehend the suspect, take him into custody for all three charges, and ultimately, he will have a court date for the felony on the mainland. The second one was an intoxicated driver that the golf cart rolled over and ultimately broke the leg of a passenger, and the golf cart driver was injured. And the golf cart passenger had to be airlifted to a hospital on the mainland. So felony DUI because there was an injury involved in it. So please don't drink and drive. Call somebody, walk, whatever you need to do. But the deputies are going to arrest you if you're drinking and driving, especially if you steal a golf cart and then crash it.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Any questions of the captain? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot to note for the record that Scott Campbell is present via teleconference.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Good afternoon.
Or afternoon, Council. Just a couple of things. Obviously, weekends are really busy. A lot of boats, we're filling up at Descanso and Hamilton on Friday nights and Saturday nights. And then during the weeks, it's starting to slow down a little bit, but we still, people are still coming over with school not starting like it normally has in the past. We're starting to see more boats linger, which is a good thing. And just kudos to Bob and Jordan and the team today with the Coastal Commission personnel. It's very important that they understand, you know, what we have, what we do, and how we like to go out and do it. And it was really beneficial, so hats off to them.
And you, thank you.
Any questions? No news is good news.
Thank you, J.J. Now I know what I look like with this black mask on, looking at his face. Is that black?
Evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just a couple brief revenue updates. For the month of July, our nightly moorings in the harbor were up a half a percent. Unfortunately, warpage, cross-channel warpage is about one-third of normal. We're still in the process of putting together the June numbers for TOT, but I anticipate it'll be somewhere around 40% of prior years. We'll have more detail on this during the budget study sessions, but I just kind of wanted to provide a general update of where the revenues are looking. As I mentioned, a study session for next week. The budget, format-wise, is going to look similar to prior year's budget. So just from a review standpoint, if you take a look and you have any questions about how things are laid out, I'm happy to answer those questions before the study session. Other than that, unless there's questions for me.
I think we're good. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I just want to give a quick update on our sidewalk vending. You may have seen or heard a cart out this past week, and it was Ben's Pretzels that has been approved all the way through for vending. Rumor has it, he had a successful couple days, and he ran out of inventory and looking to restock before he's back out again. We are still working with Matt Affolder on the commissary up at JMF. He just got approvals for the finishes, to do the changes he needs to store his cart in one of the sheds that we've got up there. So my hope is in the next 60 days, I mean, it's still a process, he's got some work to do, and he's still got to come out and prove it. So 30 days would be the soonest, I would think. 60 days is probably a little more accurate. And then it looks like he'll have approval for two carts up there, you know, one for himself, and then be able to sublet out a second cart. So there's a little bit of movement there. People have been asking about merchandise. We haven't had much in the way of merchandise carts. We've got one person that had been working on hers. She got busy for the summer. She might come back in fall, but that's, that's been pretty open. That's all I have.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. I just want to echo some comments that City Manager Ratty had talked about just previously for the census. And just want to really stress how important and how vital the census is and how it's tied locally to the community. You may have, or you may not be aware, that our response rate is approximately 25%, which means out of an estimated population of 4,000, we've got about 160 people that have responded to the census. And the reason why this is so critical, and we really need to get our numbers up, is the California Department of Finance estimates that state and local governments lose out on approximately $1,000 a year in federal funding. Federal funding is tied to the census, and for everybody who's not counted, that's $1,000. So if 3,800 people haven't responded to the census, that means per year, we essentially lose out on almost $4 million worth of funding, which is extremely critical. So if anybody has questions, if anybody wants to talk through any part of the census, please contact anybody at the city. We'd be more than happy to walk through. Your data is safe. Your personal information is safe. They are asking information, and there's a lot that's tied to, not just funding-wise, but there's a lot that's tied to the census, including representation at the state and national levels. So if you want your voice heard and you want to see funding come to our local communities, please fill this out. And you can go to my2020census.gov. The other thing that I wanted to just real quickly remind everyone is, you know, we currently have a urgency ordinance. This is 1189-20, if anybody would like some additional information or to search for it. This information's also posted on the city's website. But this urgency ordinance does a couple things, but most importantly right now is, with very few exceptions, there's a temporary moratorium on rent increases for residential tenants during the COVID-19 crisis. This is in effect until December 31st of this year of 2020. So with very few exceptions, no rental increases. The other part of that is, there is a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by residential tenants that are impacted by COVID-19. So it's tied to COVID-19, and that is in effect until December 11th. That one was tied to when we, as a county, moved into Stage 3. We moved into Stage 3 on June 11th. So six months from there puts us at an expiration date on that until December 11th. So with that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, did you have any other reports?
No, only to note that I did receive one written communication, and that was regarding item number seven on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything for us?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember report.
I'll go.
Good.
I just wanted to thank Mike for making the comments he did about the rent control, the rate increases. Because I know there was some people in town who were getting notice that the rent was going up. So thank you, thank you for looking into that and making it clear that that was not our intention. That's all.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. And then a reminder for the census also as well. With the census, I was wondering, is it possible to provide the enumerators and their team with a copy of the list of currently registered vacation rentals? It seems like a large number, and this is a conversation that we keep having in the calls every two weeks when we're meeting with the team from the census, with Scarlett and with, I'm forgetting her name, Thelma. Thank you. That there's some confusion as to the total percentage number versus the number of people that are actually living here, if it's based on the number of households listed as opposed to, or parcels as opposed to actual people. That our percentage may actually be higher potentially, although still lower than the average. So my question was if there's a way that we can actually have an idea of the list of who hasn't been actually counted yet versus vacation rentals, to remove those from the count, knowing that they're people that don't live here full-time, that may actually save their team some time, and also make it easier to then go out and target people and say, hey, we noticed you have not filed yet. Can we please have you file if you haven't?
We can provide a list of the vacation rentals, definitely.
That would be awesome. And then...
And that doesn't even cover the ones that people that just have a second home here, but never come here either.
Right.
That's hard, that would be harder to do, right?
Right. Much harder to enumerate those, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it makes sense to ask in conversations with towns and moving ahead, and I think it's a discussion that's been had in pockets everywhere. We've talked about it a little bit before. But of really looking at, especially for communities that are tourism-based and have a large percentage of vacation rentals, that doesn't mean that the needs and services of the community are any less than if those were all full-time residents, potentially even that they're higher than that because there's more traffic of people who don't live here and input their physical and personal time into the community, but do input their dollars while they're here. I don't know if there's a way that that census needs to be looked at for the next 10 years as an overhaul of how they count and enumerate people, and have some kind of equation that adds in the value of vacation rentals in the community. Because it's still, that home still requires a lot of different things, even though that person doesn't live there full-time as a resident. So I don't know if there's a way to do that and make that a goal for the next 10 years to try to tackle that problem, because it's going to continue to be a problem for us moving ahead. So. And then with regards to the rent increase moratorium, I appreciate you guys also calling that out. The only question I had on that is for people, for residents that have their utilities included with their rent. Some locations are government subsidized or government-operated, and they have a specific, they're able to increase utilities based on that, even during this moratorium. Some are privately owned and may or may not have any kind of information regarding the contract and what that breakout is. Is it still legal to increase the rent during this time, claiming that it's a utility increase as opposed to a rent increase?
Scott, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. And that depends on how the lease is worded, and what the specific notice is. But generally, utility increases that they're not considered rent are allowed under the ordinance and frankly, under, under state law. The purpose of the ordinance was to prohibit a landlord from raising the basic rent. And so it's really an issue of looking at the lease and determining how utilities are treated in that specifically.
Okay. If guests, if residents have a question about that, I know that they can print a copy of the ordinance to present to their landlord if they feel the need to. If they need to reach out to someone at the city or the county level for assistance, what's the best person or number to call for that?
Fair Labor Housing. Want to think?
No, because it's a city ordinance.
No, but after that, if it turns out, and if all of a sudden I want to jack up your rent 200 bucks because I say the utility, first of all, somebody would be that agency that would say, okay, you have to prove that the utilities have gone up that much. And that would be somebody like Fair Labor Housing. It wouldn't be a city responsibility, I don't think, Scott. Do we have a liaison?
Again, it depends on, on a specific lease. And, you know, if you wanted to have a liaison, that someone could contact the city, that may be appropriate to designate a staff person for that.
And any of the questions that come through on that ordinance, they can reach out to either Denise or I. Okay. We're more than happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. Great, thank you. That was it for now. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Really quick, I know that census is a hot topic right now, but I did want to update everyone that the deadline has been changed now. So it was originally October 31st, and now it will be September 30th. So we have about a little less than two months to answer.
Wait, what?
For the census. For the census.
It was October, and they moved it just back to September?
They're pulling that, they're pulling the public, the ones that are going out and checking the addresses. They're pulling that to a month early.
Okay, perfect.
Can I also throw one more thing out there? Does an ordinance on vacation rentals require that a sign be posted in the window?
Yes, it does.
From the contact person? I believe there's some vacation rentals that are renting, and they have nothing posted.
Okay. Do you have any specifics, Adam, Michael? Can you tell me offline?
1112 Maiden Lane, 1112, 1114 Maiden Lane.
Check into that.
Because I had someone who sent me pictures of the party going on the deck, and they said there was no contact number on the front of the building.
Is that, Michael? Check into it, Michael.
But I just wanted to make sure that our ordinance did require that, that be posted.
Absolutely, it does.
Sorry, one other thing, guys. I had asked about concerns that people have had regarding mail delays, post office delays. I know that Denise and Devin are already checking with the registrar recorder's office on drop-off locations. So for residents who are wanting to vote, not feeling safe to vote in public potentially because of COVID implications in November, if they're still here, and wanting to make sure that their vote-by-mail ballot, which everyone in California is automatically receiving, gets dropped off and mailed properly, that there are hopefully potentially drop-off locations. Previously, those have been here at City Hall and also at the LA County Public Library. And they're checking, hopefully within the next few weeks, we'll have an update on where those locations will be for this election, but anticipating they may be the same or similar.
I have a quick question regarding the census conversation. So obviously, I know due to COVID, they stopped doing, or the option of going to the door-to-door. But has there been, I mean, there is a way to go door-to-door still by social distancing with masks. Has there been any conversation about doing that to try to capture?
They had gone door-to-door with packets. I don't know if everyone's gotten one or seen one that are individually addressed. And we had mentioned to the team that having those be the first step instead of the third or fourth step might be wise to start with next time. Because since we have post office boxes, those are still not counted as a place where they will send a census originally with a code. And so the enumerators that have been hired on, they have been hand-addressing every single one of those packets, putting them on the doorknob of every single unit they go to on every single street in town. If you've not gotten one, that should be talked about, and you can, you guys can let us know offline, or you can approach either Cindy or myself, Dan, any one of us that's on the call on the, on the regular basis. But otherwise, they've been putting them onto every single door already. That was probably close to a month ago, I would guess, by now.
Yeah.
Right? And so I know that they're doing some follow-up, but I'm not sure how significant or how often that follow-up is happening right now.
Well, they're not putting them on the door. They're putting them on the ground.
In front of the door, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and that's fine. And I picked some up, and I bring them to City Hall because I know nobody lives there. But I, you know, but I don't know what city's done when I drop them off, so.
And they may be homes, again, that are people's, either vacation homes where they're a second home usually, right?
That's who they are, yeah. They're not the year-round residents.
Yeah. So if nobody answers the door, then they're leaving a packet for them. If someone answers the door, they're putting that out for them to grab and trying to be socially distant. So they've been following those protocols with masks on and everything else, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's tough then if they know who they haven't gotten responses from based on that, if they haven't answered the door, so they're keeping track. But I'm not sure what that overlap is of vacation rental versus second homeowner.
I'll be attending Gateway City's Council of Government meeting tomorrow night via Zoom. And two more unpopular discussions. One, when we will be starting or beginning to di-tab boats coming into the harbor again?
I am bringing that item back to Cindy, hopefully in the next meeting, if it's not too impacted, because I want to have a discussion about that with the council.
Okay. And then we, I know we all have received at least one, if not several, letters from residents concerned about face masks. And I know that we talked at the last meeting a little bit about starting to issue citations for no-face masks specifically on Front Street. Are we, at what point are we going to begin doing that?
I can have John come up and address that more, but I do know that John had reported that they had handed out over 100 masks this weekend.
The thing that's frustrating is if those were, I'm assuming the majority of those are visitors, they had to have a mask when they got on the boat. So where does the mask disappear? You know, that all of a sudden they don't have one. And it's good that they're passing them out because they could say, I left in my hotel room. But, but I think your point is well made. John, do you want to chat about that, or?
I think it's going to come down to the council just saying, don't be nice anymore, and don't hand them a mask, just hand them a citation.
Don't be nice anymore. Yeah, that's, the Sheriff's Department's philosophy is trying to get people to comply. People have masks with them, they take them off as they walk down the street. When we contact them, they come up with all kinds of reasons. Hey, I'm more than six feet away from everybody. I'm just me and my family. So if, I know there was discussion in the past, would the city council be interested in putting a resolution that everybody has to have a mask on if you're out of your house?
But it already is a state mandate, and so...
Right. So there's other things, because we go up to them, and then they tell us, hey, I'm more than six feet away from everybody. I don't have a mask. I don't need a mask. Well, we go by, and I, today, I walked Front Street today, I go, hey, put your mask on. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah. And they put it on, and then they're in compliance. So it just kind of matters what the city's thought, thought is on it, the council's thought.
I'm sorry, but if I can go from the sea crest and walk to the bank with this on my face down Front Street, a visitor can do the same thing.
Completely agree.
And I will say it again, our house, our rules.
Yeah.
So what is your direction? We need direction.
I'm saying...
Because it will come back and slap at you. So we just want it clear, if you're saying to John right now and to my code enforcement, issue those $100 admin citations, then they will do it. Let's do it.
will do it. But I need, we need that.
So, okay, so my question is, 6 o'clock in the morning, someone's walking down Front Street, and there's nobody there but a cop. They get a ticket? There's, you know, there's 30 to 40 feet between people. I mean, there is something about the social distancing. So if we're saying, if you're on Front Street, you have to wear a mask, and if you're going to eat, well, see, now they're eating there. So blah blah.
If they're sitting at a table eating, that's one thing. Even at Disneyland, you can't walk like this with a bottle of water in your hand anymore. You have to sit down and drink it.
Oh, yes. I haven't been to Disneyland. Okay.
Hey, we're an adult Disneyland.
Yes.
You say the word, and we'll write them.
If that's what the state mandate says, is that in a public place, you need to wear your mask, then you need, you know, you need to wear your mask. But honestly, the amount of time, and I really, I don't mean to speak for the whole council when I say this, but the amount of time that I personally spend, text messages, phone calls, and emails from folks who are very upset because we seem to not be enforcing any rules, you know, we got some bigger fish to fry right now with our budget and other things going on that I'd love to be spending my time on that. If people are not going to wear a mask, it's one of those things, follow the rules. If you're not going to follow the rules, pay the price. But, you know, it's harmful to me as a leader in the community to get an email saying, you guys don't do anything. And all you do is talk about it, and you don't do anything. And therefore, people think it's a joke. Well, I'm just going to sit here right now and say, it's not a joke anymore. I am elected to listen to everybody's concerns, but we have been beating around this bush for two, two and a half months now. Let's just start the citations, and then maybe people will wear masks. And we can focus our energies on making decisions to move the city forward as best we can.
Okay. Are we primarily, okay.
No, Annie, there are no ifs, ands, or buts on that.
So I walk out of my house, there's nobody on Descanso Street, and I'm walking downtown. I have to have my mask on when I'm supposed to have some fresh air. So I can say I'm exercising, and when I exercise, I don't have to have a mask.
See, and this is, this is one of the excuses they use. I don't have to wear, I'm getting fresh air. I don't have to.
Well, if I'm exercising, it seems like all of the complaints that I'm getting is on Front Street. It's about Front Street and Vons. It's not up here in the canyon and blah, blah, blah.
No, and I don't, I don't think that's it. But if you walk down Front Street at any given moment during the day or during the evening.
I can tell you right now, them coming from Front Street up Clarissa, 50% of them do not have a mask on.
Right. Or up Sumner, or up Metropole.
And the street is packed. And they're going to their vacation rental or whatever, and they don't have a mask on.
We're just way past it, you know? We've discussed this for over two months, or three months. It's enough.
Well, if the consensus seems to be ticking them.
I'll set up a table right out on Front Street, we'll line them up.
Book them down.
Really good with that. Just like the female just now that we just arrested a few minutes ago, intoxicated, screaming at the top of her lungs, no mask, out on Front Street. She went to jail.
Yeah, good.
Okay, sounds good. Be ready for the complaints. They'll be complaining. I'm sure they will.
Can we perhaps address stating on the boat and/or the helicopter when guests are coming over, hotels making it a part of their verbiage, letting the chamber maybe have a key and just letting people know, they will be enforced. There is a $100 fine. We prefer not to fine you. But if you don't want to comply, then we will. And right now, I know a lot of people have addressed to me the concern of the billboard that's on the road towards the boat when you're coming back from over town. And it says Catalina is open, which is phenomenal and fantastic, because it's been helping, I think, with visitor counts and everything else. But doesn't say anything about social distancing, safety, masks, or anything else like that. I know that they're getting that message when they call in to the Express, to the Island Company, to whatever company they're calling to make their reservations. But, I mean, if Vegas is literally doing a masked up Vegas on campaign, Disney's the same way. All of these tourist locations are being extremely vocal about what is required when you come into the community. I feel like we have to as well. I appreciate the Island Company signage out of Descanso, the no mask, no service, no exceptions, no shoes, no shirt, no problem. That's fantastic. So if there's something similar like that that people can start utilizing to make that an island wide campaign, I think that would be phenomenal.
Seems like I've seen that in the Thursday updates, that there has been that campaign happening. And if you, if your address is in the state of California, you've heard it all the way from the top, wear a mask.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I don't want to be a hard news, but at some point, you got to be a hard news.
Okay. Anything else, Cindy?
Uh, nope, that was it. Thank you very much.
Okay. I was wondering if we could bring to the council, I've personally had some inquiries about the Casino Dock, the Casino Dock site, and how we would proceed, however we're supposed to proceed if we want to, either let it sit there like a park, or if we want to try to move ahead and do something with the property. So is there a consensus to?
Absolutely, at least for me.
All right.
And our last negotiations have ceased, is that correct? They've dissolved?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Okay. As long as that's the case, if there was still any discussion.
No.
I don't want to step on any toes.
Oh, no, it's starting over time. Okay, that's all. I had oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on.
Wait, wait, wait.
No.
Presentations first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have Southern California Edison on the phone. Oh, I'm sorry, Adeline. I'm not sure who our representative is, but they're going to talk about income qualified programs.
Hi, this is Adeline. Can you hear me?
Yes, nice to hear your voice.
Likewise. I really miss being over there. But I'm really thankful for the technology that allows us to be there virtually.
Yes.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Adeline Young, I'm with Southern California Edison. And I just want to say that Southern California Edison understands that times are really tough for many people. And the company has provided assistance to help ease financial impact of COVID. We already may be aware that the company has suspended service with connections. We've laid break fees, laid security deposits. The company has offered these positions signature requirements for the medical speedtime program, and has issued these October climate visit and credit earlier to residential customers. I'm joined this evening by my colleague, Roger Batfield, who is the advisor for income qualified programs. And he's here to share other programs that we have that can help ease financial burdens for the customers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Roger for a presentation on income qualified programs.
Thanks, Adeline. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to present with you tonight about our income qualified programs. As Adeline stated, my name is Roger Bradfield. I am one of the advisors for income qualified programs. And I'm just going to go through a brief presentation to let you know about some of the programs that we have available to help the community on Catalina, you know, weather this storm, if you will. We do recognize that, you know, COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on the tourism environment for Catalina, and that we do have a large contingency of customers who may be in financial need. So with that financial need, we do have programs in place to assist that. So if we get Jordan to go ahead and load the presentation, I'll take you through that. Again, income qualified programs, they're basically designed to help our income qualified households, you know, conserve energy and find ways to reduce their electricity cost. Next slide, please. This is just a brief information about myself. If you have any questions or comments after the fact, or you need to get in contact with me, this is my contact information, as well as the various programs are linked to the website for se.com that has information in greater detail about all of these programs. Next slide, please. The four programs that I'm going to primarily talk about are the Care FARA program, the Energy Assistance Fund, our cool centers, and lastly, the Energy Savings Assistance Program. Next slide, please. The first part of the Care FARA program is the CARE program. It is, again, an income qualified program. At present, the income is self-certified. For customers who are participating in a federal or state means tested program are eligible for the program. Now, those eligibility programs could be CalFresh, CalWorks, the WIC program, National School Lunch program, Medi-Cal, et cetera. The nice thing about the CARE program is that it provides a 30% discount on the monthly bills for customers, as well as a 20% discount on both their water and gas bills. And the nice thing, again, is it's one application, and it enrolls in all the utilities. Next slide, please. CARE Sister Program is known as the FARA program. FARA was designed for those households who are slightly above the income guidelines that are laid out by the CPUC for the CARE and ESA program. It is designed for larger households, so households of three or more, they can receive up to an 18% discount on their monthly bill. Next slide. Again, to enroll in the CARE program, it's fairly simple. Customers can visit our website at www.se.com/care, complete an online application right there over online. And it generally takes about 24 to 48 hours for them to be enrolled in the program and then start to receive those benefits. Next slide. We additionally have the Energy Assistance Fund. The Energy Assistance Fund is a program that is sponsored through Edison International, our parent corporation makes a donation to this, as well as our employees. This is one of our employee giving platforms where employees actually provide money into this fund, as well as our customers. And what the Energy Assistance Fund is designed to do is help those households who are experiencing financial hardship, weather that storm. It does provide a one-time annual benefit of $100 to help them pay their bill. However, as a result of COVID, we have increased that to $200 for those households that have been impacted by COVID-19. A noteworthy item here is that in 2019, we helped over 11,000 families through the Energy Assistance Fund. The fund is administered through our partners at United Way, and customers can enroll for this at se.com/eas. And they'll be put in contact with the appropriate affiliate of the United Way so that they can get that money applied towards their bill if they need it. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we do have available are cool centers, you know, in hotter environments, hotter climates from time to time. We do have city and county administered cool centers. Your local cool center on the island is located at the Avalon Library. However, as a result of COVID-19 and social distancing, local cool centers may or may not be operating. So I do recommend that if you're sharing information about the cool centers, we just confirm with the Avalon Library if they are actively participating or not within the program. It's at their discretion. Next slide. The last program is the Energy Assistance Program. It has the same income guidelines as the ESA program, or as rather the CARE program. The ESA program takes those discounts a little bit further. And what I mean by that is, part of the program, SCE will pay all the costs for purchasing, installing, inspections, and measures that are free to eligible homeowners and renters. So we will actually go and perform an assessment of the home, and potentially replace refrigerators, complete weatherization on the home, make minor repairs, you know, install weather stripping, caulking, whatever the case may be for that home, all free of charge. And, you know, just to help those customers, you know, feel a little bit more comfortable in their homes. Next slide, please. These are some of the examples of those measures and services that we offer. We do provide energy education that provides load cost and no cost ways to save energy. Within their homes, smart power strips that helps reduce energy consumption when those products are not being used. Relamping measures in which we will go through and remove inefficient bulbs and replace them with new LED, more efficient bulbs. Torcheer light replacement for safety, outdoor fixture replacement, again, refrigerator replacement, freezer replacement. For households of four or more, we do high efficiency washers, and again, weatherization. It's important to note that not all our measures are available in all climate zones. Unfortunately, because Catalina is an island, it wouldn't qualify for the cooling measures such as a room air conditioner or anything like that. But we do have a large mix of additional measures that would be applicable to the island. Next slide. For program eligibility for the ESA program, it's simple. They just must receive a utility service for medicine. On Catalina Island, the island is very unique in that the water, gas, and electric are all provided by SCE. So the island meets those requirements. We have certain income requirements. Again, those income requirements are the same as the CARE program. The household just needs to also meet feasibility requirements. We just make sure that if we're installing a refrigerator, for example, that the floor is structurally sound to support that refrigerator, et cetera. The applicant may be the actual homeowner, the resident homeowner, or they may be a renter. However, if they're a renter, we just need homeowners' written permission before we can provide services to that residence. Next slide. So with this, one thing I do want to mention is that we are actively going to be having a media campaign in which we're going to be raising the level of awareness on the island. We're going to be working with the Catalina Islander, the newspaper, to communicate this. We're looking at all kinds of various tools. And we would love to partner with the city of Avalon, potentially, you know, having this information made available to them on the city's website, in any newsletters. We're going to be reaching out to the local food banks, the school itself, the Avalon School, to provide this information so that we can get it out, that information out to as many people as possible, because we want everybody that is eligible to participate to participate and be able to take benefits from these programs. Again, we realize the financial hardship that everybody's experiencing, and we want to help. You know, that's part of my job, is to make sure that we're helping the customers, their health, safety, and comfort. That's our primary concern. So with that, what questions do you have that I could possibly answer for you?
Can I ask, I believe Edison still has the page that was initiated a few years ago, the sce.com backslash Catalina. That page is still active. Is it possible to have a link on that particular page now that we've got our community comfortable going to our specific Catalina page? Could we add a link to this information?
Absolutely. I will definitely take a look at that and make sure that that page is updated. Since it is a SCE website, that should be fairly easy for us to take care of as well.
Great, thank you.
And I, this is Annie, I just had one question. Is there, is there a reason you wouldn't, I know I talked with one of your teams, some of your brainchild people that were over in the office one day, and they were talking about future plans for maybe electric stoves? Are we premature for electric stoves to get out of gas?
One of the things that we are looking at, and I was actually the individual that you spoke with that day, is that we're, as we're going through this, the first thing that we want to do is make sure that we're getting everybody signed up for the discount. Get immediate relief from, you know, any financial expenses that they're experiencing. The next phase would be the Energy Savings Assistance Program. And that's where we would go through, and we'd love to try to replace any and all feasible measures. The third part of this is through another initiative that we have going on in Edison, in which we, the island itself is going through a process of, I call it reenergizing it, where we're looking to repower the island and the ways to get rid of some of the diesel generation and everything that's happening on the island. Part of that is I'll be working with my counterparts in the building electrification function to look for ways that we could replace those gas stoves with electric stoves, replace gas water heaters with electric water heaters, and so forth.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Roger. Any questions? Any questions from the audience, from you, Michael? Any questions from the audience, from you and Michael? You didn't get anything?
I have no comments.
Okay.
Great.
Well, we want to thank you, and that was very thorough, and I will mention it tomorrow on my minutes with the mayor, and I appreciate all the outreach you're going to be doing to get the word out. So thank you very much.
I appreciate your time. Again, don't hesitate to reach out for me. Denise has my information, Adeline has my contact information, I work with her often. So if you need anything, please do not hesitate to reach out for me.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Also, if you do go to sce.com/Catalina, it does have our page still, and it has the COVID response with the links for those programs right at the top of the page.
Oh, fantastic. Well, thank you. Okay, oral communications. Opportunity for people from the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. It will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. There's one person.
Today I'm here with like a different tune. I wanna, I know I'm here usually bitching at you guys, but I wanted to say especially like thanks to Denise and Michael, and basically everyone in this room, really. You guys are faced with some very difficult decisions right now, and one of them I'm referencing, I'm hoping you guys will pass on the consent calendar, is number eight. That seems like a very, very tough decision to make, but something that is much needed right now. So I just, thank you. Thank you very much. That's something very, I thought that was like out-of-the-box thinking right there, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Besides that, I did have a question about the census. With the, with the numbers you were saying, about 160 people, like I filled out the census for my household. Does my wife have to still do something? I'm a little confused, because there's 4,000 people. I think you guys kind of touched on it.
Yeah, household, yeah. So those numbers might, they're not, it's roughly 25%, so I was just doing some quick math just to illustrate the impact that that has on total funding. But that's a great question. It's per household.
Because that was confusing, 160 out of like 4,000 seems very low, but yeah. I just wanted to make sure I was still doing my part, but it sounds like we've done it.
No.
So thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
And there's nothing on your machine?
That was nice.
I have no comments that I've come through.
All right. Consent calendar.
I have eight items this evening on the consent calendar, and I will be removing item eight into general business. The first one is minutes for approval of the July 21 regular city council meeting. Second one is warrants for disbursement of $840,093.95, and that's for the time period of July 13 through July 24. The third one is to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 1920 fourth quarter treasures report. The fourth one is to adopt a resolution declaring equipment listed, and there was two items on that resolution, as surplus property, and to authorize the city manager to dispose of it properly by selling the property to the highest bidder. Number five is to adopt a resolution to accept the grant funds and to authorize the city manager or her designee to execute a contract with Caltrans to receive grant funds. And I wanted to add a couple things on that because Annie had asked me. We do have another grant with Caltrans, and that's that sea level rise that we had to report out last council meeting. And this study is strictly to study a rerouting in our community, and it aligns us up for grants down the road, and makes us more competitive. And that money that you asked about, Annie, that we can't spend it for anything but for this grant.
Right, so, so we apply for a grant from Caltrans, and then, we then have to go out to bid, we put, now we put the thing out to bid, right? I mean...
To have the study?
Huh? Yes?
I would assume, yes.
So, okay, so that takes, so we have to work up the prospectus before we send, take it out to whomever that's out there who wants to do this kind of a study, correct? And then we receive those proposals, and then you all recommend who we select. Is that correct?
If it follows the normal process, yes, Annie, and I'm hesitant to say with 100% certainty, because that's not a question that I had spoken to Audra about.
Okay, but that's typically how it goes. So we're talking probably, oh, four months if we get on it, before this is taken out to bid, probably, by the time you give, and then you have a meeting with the people that are interested, and if they have questions, it's kind of like we do with all projects. I guess the thing that is frustrating to me, I appreciate getting $197,000, I guess because it's, we're automatically, we're automatically going to get this $197,000. But my frustration is, and I said it to you, is we know what didn't work with our public transportation, and, but we have to pay, somebody out there's going to get $197,000, $173,000 to tell us kind of what we know, to make us eligible to maybe then buy some addition to other kinds of vehicles. And it's a racket, I mean, to me, in a way.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit. This is basically like an active transportation plan. I just called something a little bit different, but what they're going to be looking at is strategies to really look at, how do we bring equitable transportation across all users and all modes of transportation? So it's not just looking at people who have the luxury of traversing the community in a golf cart or in a motor vehicle, but it's really looking at, how do we start building and designing our community in ways that accommodates people in wheelchairs, people who want to bike, safely bike, people who want to work, and then what strategies can we do to encourage alternative modes of transportation, so not just relying on public transportation? But it's kind of looking at the broad spectrum, and once we've got those strategies identified, part of it is looking at, okay, what is feasible from a planning perspective, and where can we grab grant dollars to make those infrastructure improvements? So if we wanted to put, and I'm not going to say we're going to, but if we wanted to put bike lanes along Pebbley Beach Road to make it a little bit more bike-friendly, so people can get to the Buffalo Nickel, or get to Southern California Edison in a mode other than a taxi or a car, or if they don't have the ability to walk, you know, what can we do to increase the safety and really encourage alternative modes of transportation? And that's really what the study is looking at.
Well, because there was a study done when we decided to get, well, it was right, it was even before us, that we were on the tail end of it, there was a study done to tell us what kind of vehicles we should get to do public transit. Okay, so I guess that...
That's not going to necessarily be part of this. What they're going to look at is broader than that. They might look at, okay, well, what is the current, where are the current stops for public transportation? Are there different ways to encourage people to take public transportation? Or how do people get from point A to point B? And what are alternative ways that people can use different modes of transportation in order to get to point A and point B? And so it won't make recommendations in terms of vehicle use, but it'll make recommendations more in terms of strategies to change the built environment, the physical environment, or things that we can do from an education or encouragement strategy to say, instead of taking your golf cart if you live, you know, right across the street from Vons to Vons, you know, maybe, how do we, how do we shape our environment that would encourage you to walk, or our kids to walk to school instead of relying on a golf cart to be dropped off? Some areas it's going to be feasible, and it's going to be easy. The strategies might be a little more difficult up in the hilly areas of our community.
Well, okay, can the, once we get the money, can we say we want to do more of the, I mean, we have some qualified staff here. We have Jordan Monroe, who really knows a lot of what's going on. And I just think to have somebody from the outside then come in, and the first 20 pages are talking about the beautiful town of Avalon, located 22 miles from la da da, and it's boilerplate stuff that they all start with. And then they talk about, I mean, to me...
Yeah, the crux of the plan is more on the strategy development and assessing the current needs. This is really primarily a planning document, but it will have some engineering components to that as well. And because it's grant-funded, it allows, not that Jordan's not qualified, because he's exceptional at this, and this is really a passion of his, but it frees up his time to focus on other projects while we've got a consultant who can lead and guide the project, and it's funds that we wouldn't necessarily already have access to.
Okay, well...
I mean, you do, you know, Annie, in all fairness, you do, that's part of, you know, your being up here, is you can motion to not accept the funds and not do it.
Well, if we're saying, okay, but there's a thing of, and like I think Denise said, okay, but we don't do this, and we don't do our own thing, we don't do this, then we're not eligible for funds. But that's why I meant calling it a racket, where I think we are very capable, I mean, give us $100,000 to bring on somebody to work for the city for a year, you know, and that knows this stuff, and do it that way instead of, I guess this is, I don't know, I don't know why this is frustrating me, so, we could use $100,000 in our budget, you know?
Absolutely.
And do it, but I don't know if that, doesn't sound like that's any way to get this money, to say we want to do it in-house, because nobody knows better than we do in-house.
I think the other part of this too, though, that maybe is a benefit to having this done and having that study completed, is that there are often, I think there was just one a week or two ago, where the county was looking for shovel-ready public works projects to have their county public works come and assist with city-specific projects that are ready to go. So if we can have this information ready for them to literally say, oh, we don't have to wait for doing this, we've got the plan already, we know what we need to do, this is the most important priority out of these 25 things that we want to do from this one report, then at that point it becomes worth that money, even though it may not feel like it right now, and we can definitely all think of other ways we would love to spend that much money to keep staff, to keep benefits, to keep other things. It's a specific thing they've targeted it for, like we can't...
I just think sometimes going out, again, you're seeing a lot of the things that come in when we go out to, and we get these proposals back, and so much of it is a slow boilerplate, and then it's just, I think we know, I think Bob Greenlaw knows, I think a lot of us know how we could do better with the city, okay, yeah, okay, let's put a bike path out on Pebbley Beach, that would be wonderful, okay. How many years before we get the revampment and everything to take care of that, to put something up? That's years and years ahead. We have no money, and there's no money out there. So to do all this, and then to sit on this lovely plan, when if we had the...
I still think moving forward with this opens us up to working with other regional stakeholders and, you know, gets more of our local community involved, gets us more information to work with that may potentially put us in front of someone or some opportunity that we didn't know otherwise. If, our local match on this is staff time.
Yes.
So if this means that we have two or three people from our city staff that are exposed to others and are bettering their own skills and learning more, then that to me is worth every penny of the grant money. It's also, we already agreed as a council to go after this grant. So now that we got it, I don't want to say no to it, now that we've already gone after it and...
I just did my little rant.
The one, the one thing that I would like to just make sure that staff keeps in mind, from what I'm hearing from you, is you don't want a plan that just collects dust and sits on a shelf, that when we get ready to develop this plan, because we do have the ability to control that narrative, we want to make sure that that plan is actionable, that we can continue to take it off. It's guiding, it's a guiding document, and it's something that is applicable in our everyday planning uses. We don't want a plan, just for the sake of having a plan, to sit somewhere else and we never refer back to it. And so if that's a charge, we will absolutely make sure that that plan becomes a living document.
Because we're the ones, and I'm sorry, Bob, but aren't, we're the one who create the information that's in the RFP, right? Or did Caltrans...
No, we did. We put a grant application in. We'll control this project on this one.
Okay, so, so, I mean, if there's things we don't want them to look at, I mean...
I think we have the ability to control that.
I think there's a little bit of important background. So one of the biggest sorts of transportation funding, and it all got rolled together into the active transportation program. So if you look at the background, they used to be safe routes of school and safety funds, and what they did is they rolled all that together federally and state. So, and you're competing against all of the transportation entities within California, and there is an additional pot of money that comes from the California Transportation Commission for the ATP. For us to be successful in getting those grant funds to build infrastructure, we need to have the underlying studies. This is one piece of the underlying studies, and it's looking at the modes of transportation we're using. We can, still, you could get into your cart, travel down the hill, and do whatever you're going to do, but what this does is, it looks like the relationships between using a bicycle, walking, using transit, are we using the right transit vehicles? You know, there's new technology coming out there, and so it looks into the future to be able to see that we're using the right modes. Also, we have a grant to do a master ATP plan. So those two things together are going to position us with a good foundation with projects specified in there of what we should be doing. And the community gets to weigh into that, and so when they ask, do you have community input, all of the data points are there now, and somebody else is paying for all that data points to be there, too. So now we can hand it to our grant consultants and go, here, write a grant, and these are the projects we want. You'll have your input, and the community will weigh in on it. Very important for these studies to go forward, and that's really the background, and I'm sorry that you didn't get that, you know...
No, and I understand, but you know, the first last mile challenge, and the city is one and a half square miles, so you're talking about the challenges, the city, this isn't Long Beach, this isn't Corona, you know, and so...
But we have our own unique issues.
Yes.
Well, I understand.
And the fact that everybody thinks they have to use a car park to do everything...
So how do we tell our story? Because we're competing against LA County.
I understand.
We're competing against all the other entities in California, and we are left out. And even, and some of our ATP grant applications, we're very good at writing them, but we're not successful just by a few points on our application, because we haven't had many deaths. We haven't had the significant act. So how do you spin that into something? What is our unique problem? Because we have all these visitors, and how do we move people to, and even create the sense of places? And how do we move people around in the different modes of transportation? To have a, to, really, this is a quality of life, to make better transportation, so it's a quality of life issue, so...
Yeah, we've been talking about quality of life for years. You've got the 2020 plan and the whatever, and none of that has ever been implemented. So here we go again. You know, taking that plan where we talk about bike lanes and closing down one street and doing that, none of that has happened in early? How long? So we've had that information for years and not done anything with it, so I just hope...
We've had the information, but we've done nothing about it.
I know.
But it comes down to also having the funding, and this is the foundation for the funding, and that's what the state has set up, the federal government to the state government, and this is how you get it. So that's what we're doing.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry I belabored, but thank you for your comments. Okay.
Good conversation, though.
Well, we got to have them. Every once in a while.
So are we looking for...
No, we're not, Danny.
We're still on the consent.
Item six is to appoint Councilmember Michael Ponce as the city's representative for the California Contract Cities Association.
Okay, now let's talk about this, no, I'm sorry. Okay.
Number seven is the outdoor dining. To receive and file the report, I just want it noted on a couple things, that you did receive that written communication via your email today regarding outdoor dining, and since this staff report was written, we received another application which was approved. That was for the M on Step Beach. We had a request for lighting from two businesses that are located on Middle Beach. Staff is evaluating the feasibility of it, and we're trying to figure out the cost of that, who's going to do it, and employees' time, and utilities and all that. So I just wanted that noted on item seven, and that's it.
So, wait a minute. And then at the end of the meeting, we're going to discuss outdoor dining.
This is outdoor dining. It was just to receive and file my report. We are extending the deadline for 45 days.
So, okay.
The original outdoor dining plan was till the, you know, the governor had made it till July 23rd, and then last time I reported out, we, he's just left that open-ended, and so we have, we extended it for 45 days, Annie, so we could come back after Labor Day weekend to see what the council wants to do.
Okay.
And at that time, there will be big discussion.
Okay. I, I would just like to say that I do believe there needs to be a little more, more due diligence on, on the beachfront, on the sand park, because I know they're all spread out, but I have, with the letter we got today, I agree, I have gotten some of those same comments, that there really isn't enough room for people that still don't want to go in, and it's who's asked to say, it's 4:30 now, they're putting up tables, you got to leave. I know they say they don't do that, but it doesn't feel good, first of all, we say 5:00, but they're setting up at 4:30, and...
We can address that with them?
Yeah, with all, with all of them.
So you're, when I say them, I meant all, all of the businesses?
Yeah.
So you're saying no tables on the beaches till 5:00 PM, even if there's spaces?
Well, that's what the rule was, that's what we said, yes.
Even if there's spaces, that's what they had, Steve Bray, when he came to council, said that to you, so you're saying nothing at all on the beaches till 5:00 PM?
Well, council?
So, yes, I'll agree, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what we all agreed with to begin with, so, okay, perfect. And to make sure that they're not spread all the way out to the, to the seawall, because if I want to sit there and dangle my feet in the wet sand, or no water, or whatever, I don't think that they should feel pushed off on any of the beaches.
I haven't seen them where you can't sit on the seawall with your feet in the water.
Okay, there's no water there.
Because I sat, because I sat right there last Thursday, and there was still space.
Okay, I've seen it where it hasn't, but then, but, and some days are busier than others, and I don't know if when people are putting out there, they're always putting out the same amount of tables, or do they go, oh, now we're going to have a busy night, so we're going to throw out more, like on a Saturday than a Tuesday, consistent on the, Jim's here, is the number of tables always the same with, with the, no, see, so that's sometimes, it would be more crowded, because they're throwing out more tables.
The other question I have, too, just as Jim was coming up, that I mentioned to Denise in our discussions this week, was my concern about, I don't have any issue with them actually putting tables on the Serpentine wall side, the beach side of that wall, for people to sit and use the benches as part of that, but then the issue of people that are waiting for the table to literally sit at their back, on top of the wall, or on the opposite side, becomes an issue.
Yeah.
So just maybe having the suggestion of any hosts or hostesses that are out there to ask, please, can you wait off the wall, that's a dining space, please, you have a space six feet back, or something that would delineate that for safety's sake, so you don't have someone literally standing over you as you're eating your food without your mask on.
But they're just having to stand there then, until the thing happens?
They're sitting there waiting for their, for their table.
But she's saying move them, though, because they've got somebody behind them.
One or the other, so I don't know if we need to have a discussion of not having tables...
Well, I thought it was tables on the beach, I didn't think it was tables on the Serpentine wall, but...
We had originally, Annie, discussed about letting, allowing that, yes, to sit on the, the walkway from the Serpentine wall facing the ocean.
Okay.
Just quickly to answer, I have personally been witness to a restaurant adding more tables when an adjacent restaurant was not serving that night. It didn't, the, the total number of tables on the beach for that evening would have been net less than had every restaurant been operating that night.
Okay.
So, I actually saw it as a means of addressing need, I, I saw that, that expansion, contraction, addressing need versus an, an overuse, but, but if you want us to have strict enforcement on the number of tables, we can certainly go about it that way.
No, I mean, we haven't said that, and if you don't see, I mean, you've been the guy, you've been the eyes and ears on that one, and we really appreciate that. So, I just wondered if, when there's a busier day, though, they, they don't do much.
Honestly, on the weekends right now, if, if we have a problem, it's a problem of the tables not turning over as fast as there's demand for them.
Exactly. Yeah, people enjoy sitting there, they sure do.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Can I get clarification, Annie, so I could follow up on these? Is your concern that one business is hogging more spots by adding more tables, or are you concerned about the social distancing between the tables?
I'm not concerned, I'm, I'm concerned about the, more concerned about not being right at the seawall, so if there, if so there's some space, or if I want to sit on the seawall and my kid's still playing in the water, I can do that, because I don't have a table up to my back, and I, you know, I don't know how much space that is, and if there's, you know, they seem to be stretching out this way pretty well, so, just to, for those people who don't want to feel like they need to go in at 4:30, and I'm glad we're sticking with the 5:00.
Okay. I have a few things that will be following up then with the restaurant businesses, advising them not to go all the way up to the seawall to leave, we'll come up with so many feet away, nothing on the beach until 5:00 PM, and also allowing for more distancing, and if you have tables along the Serpentine wall facing the ocean, that you have to figure out some way to keep people from sitting on the opposite side of the wall.
Can we add in there, I'm not, I don't think anyone's doing it, but if, there's not a problem with if the business next to you, and you're adding tables, because they're not there, but if the business next to you is there, to not add any extra tables?
I'm not, I'm sorry, Sarah, I'm not sure I understand.
So Jim said that, you know, if the business adjacent to you is not there, and they need the tables, so go ahead and set them up, but that's not a problem, but if they are there, to make sure that they are not adding extra tables.
Oh, got it, okay.
And Steve's here, I think.
I definitely want to hear.
Oh, sure.
What we have.
Oh, okay, so I guess we kind of pulled this one, then?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I made, I made the motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, and six.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second for the comment? Call for the vote.
You get to push the buttons tonight.
Oh, good, I did, too.
First time. I have mine, can I, can I, you want me to vote for?
Oh.
Is it this one? We have Sarah over here. Can we just do roll call?
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't...
How about that, Alan, I know?
Okay, oops, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Laville?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
So we're going back to item seven, is, do we have somebody to speak?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to let Steve in?
Is Steve Bray out there?
Two gentlemen.
Yeah, bring, bring him in first, please. Bring him in, that's fair. Yeah, please.
Good evening, councilpeople, and I just wanted to, I knew that you folks were, I saw on TV that, I know that you folks are talking about the restaurant business, and so I just wanted to, actually, definitely, I'm here to answer any of your questions, if there's any questions, and just the first thing I saw that you folks that were talking about was the dining on the beach and not till 5:00. And I'd like to just add that we, at Steve's Steakhouse and Maggie's Blue Rose, we take our tables, and our, actually, mostly our chairs out, starting about, about 4:30, 4:45, and leave them outside, inside the Serpentine wall, but never approach the beach, and actually, there's a lot of empty spots on the beach at 4:30, too. And so, the, and the people who are laying there, we never bother them, never, ever bother them right that, even if it was past 5:00, we wouldn't even say, hey, you get off the beach. We've never, ever, ever done it, I want to make sure you take note of that, and it's, it's never been a problem, and the people are very, very understanding, and they want to see us mom-and-pop restaurants make it.
Yes.
And we need some time to take all our stuff out, this is like a full-on maneuver to, to pull this, the whole two restaurants out of a restaurant and on the beach and right that, and I totally understand that no dining till 5:00, that's no problem, but we, we need some time to bring our chairs out and, and our tables out and right that. We don't, we don't take them on the beach, 5:00, we try to start, but the beach is empty, a lot of the beach is empty, and please, observe, come down and observe, you know, one day, and see what we do, what we have to do, and see what's open on the beach before anybody comes to conclusions and saying that it's a problem, because it's not a problem. And I don't really know what's happening on the other beach, but it's, it's not happening on our beach, and the galleons, the same way, I'll watch what they do and right that, and there's sometimes if people leave a, a tent on there, and you just got to, you work around it, even if it's after 5:00, we never, ever tell anybody to get off the beach, ever, and I want to make sure, and then also, I just want to answer any of your questions, if you have any questions at all, because I get to see the firsthand, I get to see the police walking up and down the street all night long, and I know I hear something about, they are, they're there, they're asking people to mask up, I was just there, 5:00, this guy was arguing, he didn't want to put his mask on, the, the policeman was very nice, can you please put your mask on? He, it's, it's his beliefs, it's something that you can't really stop, and I was sitting there, I was trying to evaluate it, and I don't really know what to do, and it's something that you guys, as a, as a counselor, you have to decide on that, but I, I heard something a little bit about that, but I watch it all night long, and I tell them, I watch the policeman, can you please mask up, can you please mask up? They'll mask up, and after he leaves, for six feet, they'll take it back down, and this is a problem, I see them, it's a constant problem, I watch it all night long, I shake my head, but I'm here to answer questions about the restaurant business, if you have any.
Well, first of all, we decided the council to, to have them start doing that $100 administrative citation for the people that aren't masking up.
I don't know, I'm sort of on the fence about that, because it's not welcoming. It's not welcoming our visitors, and if I, if I was in a town, and they sit there, maybe if they asked them to put on, and they put it on, that would be a different story if they just came up and wrote me a ticket, I don't think I'd be back to that town.
No.
It's something to consider, but it's not, I'm not here for that.
No, I know, but I appreciate your comment on that, I'm not, I, I'm not going to say big to diff for a little bit, but I know if you're sitting on the beach and somebody comes up and starts moving tables, you are going to automatically move, and that's nice that they move, did they really, would they really have moved if you wouldn't be there? Probably not, so...
On the flip side of that, though, Annie, there's, there's people who want to have dinner at the 5:00 hour and be before the rush, and want to go about their evening, so...
I've seen it a little bit more in August now, that the people are staying a little bit longer, but they have no problem going down below, no problem at all, and they totally understand, you know, what's keeping this town alive, and what's keeping these restaurants alive, and I'm, I'm so gracious that you folks let us come out on the beach, and if it wasn't for you folks that let us out on the beach, you wouldn't see a Steve's Steakhouse or a Maggie's Blue Rose this year, this next year, 110% guaranteed.
I think...
So, thank you, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Steve. We want to note to Steve some of the things that we're going to be reaching out to the risk businesses.
Sure.
Steve, they brought up that having the tables not go so close to the edge of the seawall, so if I was at the beach and watching my kids play down below, that I could sit on the seawall, so we're asking you to not push the tables so close to the edge of the seawall, and the other thing is, when you have chairs or a table by the Serpentine wall facing the ocean, that somehow we keep people off of sitting on the opposite side of the seawall, because there, there's no social distancing. Those are two things that were noted by the council.
Which, that's going to be noted, too.
So, I, that's an item that I want to discuss at council, now that we've pulled the item, that's not Steve's responsibility, I'm sorry, and it's, it's no, no, I know, but, but I'm, I'm just saying that for the comment, it is not Steve, Margaret, Adam, any of them, it is not their responsibility to social distance people who are walking up and down Front Street or choosing to sit, so either A, we don't have any tables there, and we don't have to worry about it, or B, we leave people who are supposed to be trained by now to social distance from others, if there's a table of two people sitting there, don't go sit right in front of the table, but it's, I, I am not comfortable...
We won't sit that, we will not sit that table, we refuse to sit that table until they leave, and it's for Steve's and Maggie's, I can tell you 110%, it's no mask, no temperature, no service, no exceptions.
I understand that, but what the council's asking you to do right now, if you have a table on the seawall side of the Serpentine wall...
We will not sit it.
If you have a table and you have guests there, and somebody is waiting for their turn to go to dinner, and goes and sits down there, the council wants you to go and tell that person they can't sit there.
Oh, I understand, on the Serpentine?
Yeah.
On the Serpentine?
Yes. And I'm saying that's not your responsibility.
I'm trying to see that vision, but there actually, there might be one person, actually a close-up person, but the, the Serpentine is a bench, then a bench, then a bench, then a bench, you know, so...
There's only, yeah, there's only like...
There already is distance.
That happens. I think if we could just say that the rule would be to not have tables on the beach side of the Serpentine wall, if there is a bench on the opposite side, people can sit, that that should alleviate most of that concern. Would we agree with that?
That's a fair way to do it.
Yeah?
Because the entire Front Street, there is zero social distancing on Front Street in general, and there's no way to enforce that. So, if you're walking down the street, you are not going to, like, stop until everybody else goes six feet away from you, I'm, it, it's just not, it's not going to happen, so I'm saying I don't want to put all these rules in place that is just like over, you know, overemphasizing all the things that, that, you know...
Can it be observed by the city council, when they come down and look at it, and then can they make judgments as far as, you know, if the Serpentine wall is actually really a problem, and you see it's an issue, that, that you could have smart, we use like eight tops right there, and then basically, we could probably use a four-top if there's been too much of a distance or something like that, and it would be, it would, it would fix the problem, but I, I didn't, I haven't even, I wasn't even ready for that question, because I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't gotten many comments on that side of it at all.
Yeah, I've, there's just been photos posted several times from different people of that happening, literally of a table on one side, people sitting up on the wall above them on the opposite side, or on the bench behind them, and it's very clear that there's not social distancing happening, so how are you protecting the person with the mask off eating dinner, which is great, from someone that's literally behind them, may or may not be wearing a mask, which in a couple of photos, were not wearing any masks?
But, but how, how are you protecting that person?
Well, this is the part, it's trying...
You personally?
No, not, this is the point, is trying to mitigate how we can make the spacing work, so that it's addressed without having to mitigate it further, it's addressed already in the planning as opposed to enforcement.
So if they're not on the Serpentine wall...
I mean, people can go and take 100 pictures a day of everything going on wrong, and that's what I'm...
I will definitely, I personally will take that, you know, look at it myself, because I wouldn't want my customers next to them.
I'm frustrated with the person who keeps taking pictures and posting it on Facebook, thinking, oh my gosh, this is not happening the right way, and it's like, you have a personal responsibility to follow the rules, it is not the council's responsibility to be making sure that everybody is socially distanced, it's a personal responsibility. The enforcement of that, the, the rules were set, we're following them, the enforcement of those rules is coming from the Sheriff's Department, who spends a majority of their time these days telling people to put a mask on, and, and it's just frustrating the amount of hours that everybody is spending, calling people out and determining, you know, you have a personal responsibility, it comes down to that, wear your mask, social distance from people, take care for others, it's, I just don't understand why we do this every single council meeting.
Because it's still happening, unfortunately, it's, it's still an issue for a lot of people, and they may not be the residents that are living here, it's other people, but I think if, if we can put a plan in place that does that, I think that, that idea of looking at it, seeing how large those tables are, seeing if potentially having a shorter top would be, would be able to solve it, a smaller top, a four-top instead of an eight, or even looking at where the spacing is, where it is okay, and it's not to be able to put tables, that's going to solve that issue, it's going to solve it very quickly and easily, so I don't...
So then you're now saying that my family, my husband and I, and my five children can't go to dinner together, because we would be seven people?
No, no, just the ones at the Serpentine wall, just literally the ones on the wall that take up the space that would have an overlap on those benches where you can't then separate.
And I don't, I don't think there is any large tables.
Well, and I think right now, technically, they're doing up to six per table anyway, and then having separate tables for larger parties, and putting those as close together as they can safely, but it's, it is, I'm not trying to over-manage this, it's literally just one point where I think there's a resolution we can make that's very easy and quick, and says, great, you can't put a table right here, but you can right here, that's it, you're good, solves it.
Okay, so let's, let's, um...
I don't have any issue going down and reviewing everything with Steve for setup and everything like you're asking to, I think that's a great idea, I've, I've gone down a few nights in a row for closing, and a few nights for opening, and I don't have any issues with going down again to check it out.
And then we went, put it back on Jim, we went Jim to work with Steve, or check it out as well, Jim, don't you the guy?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep an eye on, over what you're talking about, Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep an eye on what you're talking about. And like I said, we're very, very grateful. And I just want to make sure that you know that we are dying to come back inside. You know, the next day, or that day, that Mr. Newsom says it's okay and it's safe, and we are coming back in.
You're not going to ask for tables on the beach anymore?
If we do, it's going to be what I usually, what I originally asked for in the first of June, which would be a 400 square foot area, which I would, which I already talked to the city manager, Denise, that, that we would rent an area and basically charge the people the price that we have, and maybe six tables. I don't, no, we, we, we're stretching the rubber band way too, you know, from the tables I have in Steve's Steakhouse. If you're, if you want it, and, you know, that's another thing, that's down the road, I want to get back in, and I have enough tables in the restaurant to work fine without that. And then if you're encouraging dining, if everybody's going to be dining out, then basically I'm going to have to be forced to dine out. But believe me, it's like, we are tired of bringing all those tables and chairs in and out every night. It is quite a lot of labor.
Yes, I, I understand. Okay.
We're very grateful. Thank you very much for letting us do this.
Uh-huh.
Is there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to get my seven o'clock rush right now. I'll see you later.
Okay. So just to reiterate, on this thing, it says, per the guidelines approved by the council on July 7th, begin at 5:00 p.m., restaurants have the opportunity to set up tables and chairs on the upper sand dunes areas.
Yep, we have ours.
Okay. But just a reminder, what we said, July 7th. Somebody else is here on this matter? Are you here to talk about outdoor dining?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I haven't been back here since, well, it's, a lot has changed, I guess, since I was last here in April 1st, the last week in March. I kind of bounced back between here and the mainland. So, uh, so the same thing on the mainland that's happening with the social distancing in the restaurants, and sitting outside, and not being able to go inside. Uh, and as I walk around the island, uh, you know, a lot of the restaurants that are sitting outside, you know, well, one thing, it's very hard to basically keep people six feet apart. I mean, everybody can wear a mask, but to keep six feet, people six feet apart is kind of tough. And, um, and being a small island like Catalina is, and a lot of the spaces aren't really big, but I think that if, uh, and the last thing, anybody here is, wants the virus to get here. So, um, uh, but I think probably, maybe the city council can just like, you know, view certain spaces and see where you can make it where at least maybe where some restaurants have, like, one of the places I eat where it's every other, well, every seat is filled, they have the plastic thing. Maybe you could do every other seat that a restaurant could do.
You're talking outside, sir?
And I'm talking outside.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so, you know, if you have a seat here, and a seat here, and a seat here, this seat here, don't let anybody sit there. So this seat and this seat is pretty much will give you six feet. But if you have a restaurant, and you just have a seat here where somebody's sitting, a seat here where somebody's sitting, a seat here where somebody's sitting, and then on the side, you have somebody sitting here, sitting there, that's not exactly six feet. So, um, that might need to be looked at.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I understand about this.
Yeah, you know, well, in Los Angeles, where I'm from, uh, most of the restaurants keep two seats, but Los Angeles is obviously a big, huge city. But they, most of the restaurants over there, it's usually two seats when you're in a, outside, it's every two seats. So I guess what they're doing, because the virus is so crazy on the mainland, they're keeping people trying to do it eight to 12 feet apart. But, but like I said, in LA, you got more space, so you can do that. So here, I would just suggest maybe having just every other seat.
Oh, great.
And that should do it. And of course, everybody wearing masks.
Yes.
So, um, most of you guys I know, um, I know Sarah, I believe you, and I think in this lady here, and so...
Do you know me, too?
Michael. Again, didn't recognize you with the mask on. So, so that would just be my suggestion.
Well, thank you for, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So the recommended action for this item is just to receive and file the report. And I was only noting some things that weren't noted in the report.
There's no action to do that, just?
No, I do. I need an action.
Oh, an action to, I make a motion to receive and file the report regarding outdoor dining.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded for the comments. Michael?
I have one comment in regards to this item. It comes from Paula Patterson. She asks, is food being carried across Crescent and even further uncovered to diners?
Yes, it is, from all the business, all the restaurants. It has to be carried across Crescent, has to be carried down Catalina Street and across Crescent.
She means uncovered. I think her question is uncovered versus with those, like, things I've seen.
You should ask the restaurant guy. I haven't had dinner on the beach.
Yeah, I've seen both uncovered and covered, depending on which location. So...
Yeah, same. I've seen both. And it's been kind of a long walk. Uncovered.
I don't know that there's an LA County Public Health Department issue with that. I believe that when they created the emergency ordinance, it addressed having service locations adjacent to food service places, including outside spaces that they knew they would be carrying food inside and outside. I don't think that I saw anything in those ordinances about requirements for food service that wouldn't be the same as if you were taking it to your patio.
Right.
We've had three known health department visits in the last two months. And so I'm assuming since the health department has been on site, that they've made their issues known, or made different provisions for things.
And, and I think the fact also that they have made the parpalets, so they've actually gone into the street.
Right.
So, a lot of the outdoor dining on the mainland in LA County is not happening on the sidewalk.
It's in the street.
It's actually happening, it happened in the street.
Street.
So they are carrying their food across that, so...
That question covered or not covered was the sure question, but...
We've dined in the parpalets on the mainland, and they've never had it covered.
We have a resident expert, Jim.
No, I, I do have an observation regarding, regarding the covered plates. And often in the health code, that's a suggestion, not a requirement. And it's about food temperature in order not to have foodborne illness, have an opportunity to become active when temperature drops. So that would be a control at the subject of our health department, more than Paula's concern is probably about direct COVID exposure to the food. I don't know that, what was in her mind. But it usually has to do with the safe temperature of the food.
Okay. Yeah, good. That makes sense. Okay. Anything else, Michael?
Uh, that's the only question in regards to this item.
And nobody else out there, Captain? Okay. We want to discuss item eight.
Right, I need to do a vote. So we had a motion by the mayor, and a second by Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Motion for second.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Cassidy.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
Okay, item eight.
Uh, we're going to go to public hearing first, Annie, and then I'll move eight to general business.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That will be the first one in general business.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing for our property related fees. We put these fees on there for every parcel that is in the city of Avalon, and it goes on the property tax rolls. We pay the county 25 cents per parcel to put these fees on, which gets put on our bills that we pay. In Exhibit A, that fee schedule was adopted for five years back in 2017. And you can see on Exhibit A for all the five years. So for this year, I just want to give an example in case the public hasn't seen this. For the increase from 2019 to July 1st of 2020, for the sewer rate, it would go up $25.50 for the year. The salt water sewer service rates for a resident would go up $13.85. And the solid waste fees would go up $16.30. That's a total of $55.65 for the year for residents, which breaks down to $4.64 a month. Now, if, we publicly noticed it. So if people had any concerns, they were supposed to write something and submit it to the city clerk's office. I have not received any formal complaints against these fees. And in order for you to turn those fees down, you would have to be by the majority vote, unless you so deemed you didn't want to do anything by increasing the fees. And we have till August 10th to let LA County know that we are proceeding forward and what the amounts are. If you have any further questions, Matt Baker is in the audience.
Under the circumstances, I mean, it doesn't seem like very much. And knowing the situation we are in with our sewer, saltwater, and solid waste, it's...
And I did want to remind you also that we had discussed the possibility of having a rate analysis study, but we, because of costs, we were unable to do that. And in actuality, these costs do not cover what it costs us to run the sewer plant, the saltwater system, the landfill.
Right. Okay, comments before we open it up?
Okay.
Okay, we'll open up a public hearing. Mind whether to collect annual trash fees, recollection, sewer fees. Is there anybody here? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, council?
Anything on ecomments, Michael?
I have no comments.
Are you looking, do we, are we motioning for the adoption, to adopt the four resolution reports?
Yes. So moved?
I'll second.
And you're directing the city clerk to request the Los Angeles County to place, to place the fees on the fiscal year 2021 property tax roll?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
And the only question I have is recouping the fees that it does not meet. How, what is the vehicle to do that?
I, I apologize, I'm sorry.
Recouping the fees that it does not meet to cover the cost of the operations? What?
We have to do a rate analysis in order to raise those fees sufficiently. And so we are going to have to budget that at some point. Because we, in order to raise them, we need to be able to justify it. And so...
Can we do that before the five-year term that was already agreed to? Or does it have to be?
That will be our goal.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to add to that, we did contract with someone last year for that study. And my plan is to reach out to them to continue that study. And we'll be back for council probably before the end of the calendar year with the results of, of that study. And from there, that'd be for the next five years, potential increases to consider in order for those funds to, to be self-sufficient.
See, I would, I'd like to get a grant to help us pay for things, so we can get that kind of studies done. Those are the most critical to us right now. But, okay.
Agreed. Okay, we have a, a motion by Councilmember Cassidy, and a second by Michael Ponce. So I'll do the roll. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Aye.
And Mayor?
Aye.
Okay, we are going back to item number eight. Will be our first item in general business. I have pulled this item because I would like to make some comments. That I was contacted by an association last Thursday, and I've been in contact with them. And we held a Zoom meeting yesterday. They were not in agreeance with the amended MOU. So after that call, and they had asked if I could please remove this agenda item, I reached out to the other four associations to see where they were at with the MOUs. And they were, all four of them said, yes, they were on board. They knew what the financial situation of the city was, and they were fine with proceeding forward with you adopting their amended MOU's. So my recommended action to the council this evening is to adopt the resolutions amending the memorandums of understanding between the city of Avalon, and the Avalon Municipal Employees Association, the Management Association Confidential and Unrepresented, and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2295, and to hold off adopting the resolution for the Avalon Harbor Employees Association until I have time to meet and confer with them.
So, you want to start?
Oh, I just want to ask, um, what, what is their, what is the concern?
They were just not in grants with several of the items. We did not meet, confer prior as all the other associations. I just notified them via a letter in July 14th stating things that I would be taking away from their MOU's.
And everyone was in response, except for the one that you didn't mention, which is the Avalon Harbor Employees Association?
That is correct. And we just did discuss the MOU's in closed session, and you all agreed that I could move forward with that. So they were notified.
And if we decided to move ahead on all five, and knowing that they would, the other four would sign, but these, this other group might not, can we still put these steps in action?
For the association that...
Right. That doesn't want to sign?
Well, everything is on hold and standby anyway for some of these items. No step increases, no longevity. This was to formalize everything that I had put in writing.
Right, exactly. So if the other departments want, are willing to go with this, which I appreciate it so much, because this was hard on Denise, and I know it's hard on all the employees. But if we were to approve these, does it matter what Avalon Harbor Employee Association thinks? Would all of them actually take effect with them as well?
They are an association. They have, have legal representation.
Okay, but...
So I am asking to be able to meet and confer with them.
If I can address, the memorandum of authorities do provide that in an emergency situation, the city can take unilateral action. Obviously, we'd like to get everyone's consent on this, but it's not required, assuming that there's an emergency action. And we, Denise explained to the representative of the harbor that the city is actually facing a unique emergency financial crisis that necessitates it. So, again, it'd be best if everyone agreed and, and signed off on this, but it's not required because there's an emergency situation.
Like they don't know. And how many times do we have to tell them, we're using general fund money to keep the harbor department open? We're not really laying off people. We're doing our damnedest. And if I was in one of these other associations, I'm going to go, oh, well, you're going to talk to them? Well, let me, let us go back to the drawing board. And we don't want that to happen. The question is, so we approve the four, which their cuts would take effect immediately, but this other association would be sitting out there, not being impacted yet? Or do we go retroactive? Can we go back and say that?
I, I would say that they're still impacted just as well as the other associations, Annie, because from, within seven days is when I met with most of the associations in person, and said all the steps that I was taking, you know, freezing vacation, freezing overtime, all the stuff that we froze. And this is just to formalize it, because we never really thought at that time we'd still be in this situation. And I know that most employees are very well aware that even though their hours have been cut, hours have been reduced, they've been furloughed anywhere from 32 hours to, down to 12. And we have kept their healthcare benefits at full cost to the city.
Yes.
This is, I stated in the staff report, it will hopefully save us 500, even maybe $600,000. We, I really broke it down today.
I know, but you gave them up opportunity. Now they're coming up at a later hour with legal counsel. And again, so if we approve the four, and wait for you to come back in another two weeks, maybe they're going to take a month, who knows? And then we still end up, we still have the ability then to say, no, but you're going to get what everybody else... but you're going to get what everybody else has received or not get?
My understanding from Scott, yes, that's what we would be able to do. I would hope that I could meet with them and we could come to some understanding within the next two weeks. I don't anticipate, and I will say it for the record, to give them anything that the other associations are not getting. Everybody, all the associations, and I've tried extremely hard when we adopted these last MOUs to make them as unilateral as possible depending on their association. So, no, Annie, if, they're not going to get anything that the other associations aren't being given. It would not be fair. And everybody talks about parity, and I do my damned-darnedest to do that.
And so, again, so are you saying, let's put this off a couple of weeks so none of this takes effect on any association?
No, only to hold off for the harbor so we could meet and confer, and that the other four associations, they would be amended as of today.
Okay, and we can go retroactive on the harbor? Because if theirs starts today, and now the harbor's not going to start for a couple of weeks, can we then go retro to that same day as?
I don't see anything in there that they would be able to get between now and...
A percentage of time or anything, okay. As long as there's nothing like that?
Because I had already held off on longevity and...
Okay.
But I think also what you just said was that you're not going to be changing the tactic that, you know, I understand there might be some questions on some of the items and how that may affect long-term. But are you saying that you would not even be changing something for harbor that the others wouldn't get?
That is correct, it would not be fair. And if I was convinced to do the opposite, then I would certainly bring back all the contracts to amend them again.
And I also just want to put out there, had this, you know, through this whole process over the last two months, had the association come and said, we really want to delve into this and look at this, and they didn't until the 11th hour. The track record with this association over the last two negotiations has been difficult to communicate with. And that is not on your end at the city manager's office, that was with the association. So I, we are, from my perspective, we are in a very drastic and emergent situation, and specifically with our harbor fund. And that is not going to get better, that is going to get worse as the winter comes. And, you know, me personally, I would rather keep jobs than benefits. I would rather try to keep people as full as possible. Had we been presented with, you know, removal of insurance benefits or family medical benefits, that to me is drastic enough to really bring in, you know, hearty conversation. But, I mean, we're not talking that drastic at this time. And I just don't, you know, the other four associations have graciously come to the table and said, we understand. You know, I personally don't want to pull it. I'd like to move forward with all five because we have hearty conversation about our budget and our solvency as a city, quite frankly, that we're going to start having next week. I just don't want to be spending the resources when we know that we may not be giving something to one association that we're not going to give to the others.
And bottom line is, is the bottom line. I mean, we only have so much to go around, and when that's gone, then everything's gone. So there won't be a job, you know? Does the city face dissolventcy and we dissolve and become part of accounting? Those jobs go away, somebody else will be coming in to take over those. So you've got to be able to work with us. We feel that we're being fair on what we're doing. So it, we're all in this together, and I know you hear that all the time, but we are, we're all in this together, and everybody has to hurt a little bit. So, and to be honest, in the last crisis in 2008, we tried not to cut back anybody. We tried to keep everybody where they were. But this one's even bigger than that. So there's got to be some give.
I do want to clarify one statement, Councilmember Cassidy, is it hasn't been a couple of months. My letter went out July 14th, and each association got a very similar letter, but the bullet points might have been a tad different only because of what's in their MOU. And the particular one for the HEA, it had 10 bullet points. And then it was my letter that went to all the associations again on July 22nd that did cause quite a stir, as you can imagine, because it mentioned that in the future, pending layoffs could be happening, readjustments to their purse contribution and the healthcare benefits. The cap that we pay would be going down, and maybe demotions or changes in positions. And at that point, within 24, 48 hours, I heard from three associations asking very specifically, what did I mean and what was my timeframe, those type of questions, financial impact. And then the other association didn't reach out to me, but they reached out to Matt because they had a very, they had a financial question they wanted from Matt. So at that point, I thought everything was good until I was contacted last Thursday, so...
And I apologize, I appreciate that moment of clarity. My comment, just to clarify the comment of knowing for a couple of months, we closed the harbor, we have no cruise ships coming, we have no warfage. And we know a majority of the harbor is funded by that. So we've all known that we are going to be in a financial crisis, especially when it comes to the harbor fund. So that's what I meant by knowing for a couple of months that, you know, we would be making some hard decisions at some point down the line. And we're not going to recover warfage in 2020. We will be lucky if we see a cruise ship before 2021.
So I hear what you're saying, let's adopt the resolutions for all of them. Denise is, I believe, asking us to not give her a couple of weeks on the other ones?
Asking, yes, to adopt it for the four, and that give me two weeks to meet and confer with the other association.
I don't know what you're going to get accomplished, but I'm willing to go with that if she feels she needs to do that.
As long as it's finalized, for me, as long as it's finalized on the next city council meeting, and that anything, that it's retro or that it begins as of today's date, as would the rest of the associations.
Okay, so is that a motion?
But I honestly, this is such a topic, I would really love to hear from both, both of our other council members to please chime in and give your thoughts.
I'll agree with Annie, if Denise needs two weeks, I'm okay with that, but as long as we come to a conclusion by next meeting.
I am perfectly fine with Denise having the discussion with them. I think the comments you've made are spot on. Everyone's been aware of it, it feels like we've been waiting for the shoe to drop. And Denise, in her efforts, has tried to, as painful as it is and as frustrating as it is for me, because I mean, I appreciate the longevity of many of the employees from all of the different departments, and what they've done, and what they're working towards, and what they're working for, and what they've done for the city. I also appreciate that I would rather have them working and keeping certain things as they are right now, as long as we can, in the hopes that it becomes better, and cut things that we know will save money right now. And I think that's what we're in, and I appreciate the four other agreement, the MOU teams that are agreeing to this, because I know it's not an easy decision, and I know it means a lot for a lot of people. And it's a tough call to have to make, but I appreciate that it's a call that we have to make. I would second if there was that motion to approve the four currently, allow for two weeks with the results to come back at the next council meeting, and have it be retroactive to today.
That sounds like a motion right there.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Yessenia, call for the vote.
Sarah, do you want to add anything as far as comments and your thoughts about the situation?
No, I mean, I really think we all realized that this was going to happen. There was no way around it. I know that last closed session we had, it was even harder to have the conversation and make the decision, so, and I'm very sorry. But I think we're all internationally on the same.
Yes, yes. Michael, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so that was to adopt the four resolutions and to hold off on this one until I can meet and confer. And it would be finalized by the next city council meeting and retro to this date. And the motion by, was by Lisa Lavell and seconded by Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item number 10, general business.
Number 10 is the verification of sufficiency of signatures for the petition entitled, "Initiative Measure Imposing a Special Tax on Passengers Traveling to the City of Avalon and on the moorings of vessels within the City of Avalon for the Purpose of Funding Costs Relating to the Improvement or Replacement of the Kedlin Island Medical Center and a Placement of the Measure on the Upcoming Ballot." My recommended action to this evening is to receive and file and accept the certificate of sufficiency of the initiative petition, which was in your pack, and that we receive that from LA County, and to adopt the attached resolution placing initiative measure on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. This is for all cruise ships, aircraft that come in, cross-channel carriers, and there would be, starting on April 1st of 2022, so two years from April, 50 cents would go on all of those cross-channel carriers, the cruise ships and the aircraft. And then it would go up to $1 following April of 2023, and then $2 each way on April 1st of 2024. $1 for vessels per day that are visitors that are coming into our harbor, that is not for people that have their own moorings or the leasees. And also I want to note that there are forms to fill out in the city clerk's office if you wanted to produce an argument in favor or against this petition, or, excuse me, thank you, this measure that will be on the ballot. And that deadline is August 13th at 4:00 p.m. And once I receive any arguments in favor or against, I send those to the opposite people, and they are entitled to do rebuttal, either for or against. And that is for August 24th, 4:00 p.m. is the deadline on that. I want it noted also that the full text of this measure will not be in the voters' pamphlet because of the cost of putting it in there. And there will be a statement, though, on the ballot when you go to vote. I do have, oh my God, Carol Reynolds.
Thank you, I just went blank on her name. Carol Reynolds is here, if you have any questions on the measure, so... Sorry, Carol.
This is Scott Campbell. The one thing I would add is that part of the recommendation to place this on the November ballot is, one, when this was being circulated, this was talked about as being on the November ballot. And secondly, the cost of putting it on the November ballot is the cheapest of all the costs. So in times of the city budget crisis, the recommendation is also based upon saving money by putting it on November.
Yeah, so you said about $1,000 or whatever?
Just for the print on the ballot itself will be about $1,000. And then it will still just be minimal cost after that.
Okay. And Carol? It's a very simple question. I'm assuming that the CIMC wants it to be on this November 3rd statewide general election, not into 2022?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, after all that hard work, yes.
All that hard, ready to roll.
That was the plan.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure for everyone. Okay, does anybody else have any questions of Carol? No?
No, but I do feel compelled to bring at this time that at the time, Councilmember Ollie Olson and myself sat for the last couple of years on the Hospital Consortium, which was a group of stakeholders that met monthly to address the concerns of the community through all these past years. And I really appreciate the hospital and the group on that side addressing the concerns from the community that were brought forward, and appreciate the efforts in taking care for that. So thank you for all the time and effort that we were participative and for sharing all the way through, the way in which you guys did. It was much appreciated.
Well, we really do feel, Cindy, thank you for that. We really do feel that this is a community effort, that it was, after we lost, you know, two years ago, we went back to the drawing board, we looked at the community, we talked to the community, we heard from the community. And that measure that presently exists is definitely the work of the community. So we're excited about that, that we can truly represent the community as we move forward to build our new hospital or medical center, which is now what we're calling it.
And one of the big things in the last campaign was, we didn't have a place to put the hospital. And now we have a location, so that's, that's a big step forward.
Yeah, yeah.
And putting the, I think, one of the comments is putting a sunset clause in.
Right, right. Those are the things that we heard, those are the things that we listened to after we had the last, the last measure. And those were easy fixes for us, that we were able to fix them, make them right, and make the entire measure more appealing to the community. So, Yessenia, I think, did you start?
Yes, I know that you were organizing a town hall.
Thank you.
And then we're going to do one as well in Spanish. I've kind of done my best to talk with a couple of community members in the Hispanic community. Is there a way for us to be able to get information out?
Michael has it.
Once we pass this, I'm, hopefully, as I'm going to make that.
Yeah, I just know that some of the people I spoke to actually didn't even know this was happening. I don't know if there's a way to get that information out before the town hall so they can prepare themselves with whatever questions they may have and have them ready for it.
There's been a link developed on Eventbrite, Michael, I think you have it, where people can register, and they will then be connected through Zoom to get connected to the town hall. So, Michael, I'll let you take care of that part, okay?
Yeah, it would be savecimc.org.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay.
Savecimc.org. You would register, and then you would get the link to the town halls. And there's going to be a few of them, so...
Yeah, I was mostly asking like more information about the ballot, but in Spanish? Because I know a lot of people are actually not aware of it at all. You know, they have no idea about the 50 cent increase, $2 increase, they have, you know...
I'm sure the foundation can do that, to translate it in Spanish.
I can get that for you without any difficulty. Yessenia has graciously agreed to host a Spanish-language virtual town hall for us. Annie's going to kick it off next Wednesday night by the first virtual town hall that Michael just alluded to. Michael's finishing for us in October, just as the absentee ballots go out. So we have a nice cross-section of virtual town halls. We have more slots available if anybody else wants to be a host for one of them. So that's great.
Great. So receive, file, accept the certificate, and adopt the attached resolution. Michael, you want to make that?
I make a motion to adopt, to receive and file, and to, to...
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Placing initiative measure on the November 2020 ballot.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any comments?
I have no comments.
Okay, nobody's outside? I finally remember. Okay.
Hold on.
Okay.
So my first question is, I'm wondering why it went from a set fee to a scaling fee? And who makes the decision to increase that from 50 cents to $1 to $2?
Because when we first did it, they didn't like the fact that we were starting at $2, so they felt that it would be much more fair to gradually build it up.
Okay, and then the sunset clause, it says until ended by voters. So does that mean someone's going to have to pay out of pocket to put another measure on the ballot in 30 or 40 years to get rid of it? So I don't think that's a real clear set sunset clause.
For, so maybe Carol can... So maybe Carol can respond because on this thing, it says the would establish a special for a period of up to approximately 40 years. Did you all, did you come up with an actual 30, 40-year sunset date? Good question, Carol.
It's 40, 40 years unless the debt is paid off prior to that.
Okay.
So if the debt is paid off in 30 years, then the clause goes away. If it takes 40 years, but if the debt, it's 40 years or when the debt is paid.
And then let me ask just for clarification because Carol probably asked, what is the debt that is assumed? A loan? I mean, because every year the hospital will have expenses. So what is, what is that debt? You know what I mean?
It will be the SBCA loans, the major loans that we get from the government.
Okay. Great.
And what the tax will pay for the loan, the cost of the loan is what it's for.
Okay. Great. Yeah. Thank you.
And those funds cannot be used for other parts of the hospital.
Very, very.
It's extremely specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't go too far, Carol.
My main concern with the sunset clause was they did say that the money can be used for added services or additional services. And I'm just concerned that once the project's paid for, they'll just find, oh, well, we got to add this and we got to add this program and this program. And so they'll continue taking the money. I just, thanks for clarifying, though, because that, that was confusing to me. Thanks.
The sunset clause specifically states in section 10 point, or 10 dash 2.611, "The special tax shall expire on the earlier of, A, the end of 40-year term loan or bond issue, or B, the date at which all costs for constructing the center, including debt service and financing costs, are paid." And then it goes on to just say that, "Should the construction of the hospital be abandoned, the special tax shall cease to be collected and all amounts deposited with the city shall be dispersed to transportation and port of entry capital improvements necessary for the city."
Well read. Thank you.
Well written.
I think, Carol, that answered you?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Carol, there's no further questions or do you have any e comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you. And we're, okay. Counsel?
Oh, wait. So we didn't do the vote yet, did we?
Nope.
So we had a motion and second. I have a motion by Michael Ponce and a second by Lisa Lovell.
Okay. And then we ask for comments.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All right. Number 11 on the agenda is just, it's an item of discussion and to provide some direction to staff, which would include Captain Hawking at this point. It had been brought up about the article that John, Captain Hawking places in The Islander, whether to have it at all, to have it with just the incident and not the names, or to have it with the incident and the names. So.
My only issue was definitely just the names. I mean, it's great that we have, you know, the community should be aware, but just the name, I believe it reinforces, you know, negative stereotypes. It does create racial bias. I know many don't want to admit it, but it does. And it's something that's transforming now and changing actually all over the world. I've looked it up to make sure. And I know as well that there is actually no other city in LA County that does it. So I'm not saying get rid of it completely. I know that it's information we should have, but just no names.
Any other comments? The only thing that we all know is that all of that information is public information. So if a freelance writer for the Catalina Islander contacted the sheriff, they could get the whole report correct, all the specifics, and turn it into a big story like they do in the real world over town. So we can't, we can't, like, I'm agreeing with you, but we can't erase that from happening, you know? It still could very easily happen. Anybody could get that information and write an article and submit it to the Islander.
Right. But why contribute to the issue?
No, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
But I'm just, yeah.
So I'm really just asking if we could please. I mean, I understand that it can happen and we can and it's legal. I understand all that.
Right.
I'm really just asking to please not do names.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that right now.
I think there were, I feel like when we were younger, reports used to say a 32-year-old male, a 34-year-old female. And they would include some identified information, but not their name. Or would include a general area, but not a physical address. That those types of things, I think, are in a town that already gossips enough and people may know their name anyway, that it makes sense to not exacerbate the situation. And then I know that it was, and I'm sorry because it just happened last week, an error, but the first name of a person was mixed up. And there's a person that lives here that had the incorrectly printed name that was not the subject of anything. But then now you have an issue of someone being identified as a person that was impacted potentially in a criminal act. And they shouldn't have been because of a letter or an error. And it's very easy, as we know, for local papers to make printing errors often. My uncle used to have me go through and grade them when I was in high school and college to actually circle errors in the Islander. So it is something that, you know, if it can avoid that potential error and also provide that if someone wants to go search that information out, of course, they can find it. They'll find it on the internet. They'll find it at the sheriff's station. They may find it from the person themselves. But then at least it's not coming from a source that is publicly printed and has the potential for error. It's a public record that is officially able to be requested. So I would support having it be that way.
Well, I don't, I don't want you to put my age in there.
We can take out the age if you prefer not to. We can take out, I mean, you can literally just say an individual was stopped or arrested or cited for.
I don't have a problem with their sex and their, and their age personally, but.
I mean, it's like we could, you could do local man, local woman. I have no problem with using names for the visitors who come over. That's no good. But local, I'd rather be not as.
Well, if you do local man, local, then we should do mainland, male mainland, I mean, something because.
I think we do like visitor, right? We say visitor or something like that?
Yeah. If you want, I can tell you what is legal to put out in the media. And you'd be surprised at some of these things that you can put out. But name, current charge, occupation, physical description, time and date of arrest, time and date of booking, location of arrest, the factual circumstances surrounding the arrest, the amount of bail, the time and manner of release, location where individual was held, all charges, including warrants, parole, probation, anything like that, and calls for service, times, substance, the location, nature of response, age of victims, description of suspects, and it goes on and on. Things you cannot put in there is juvenile names. If somebody's held on a psychiatric hold, you can't use their name. And if there is any type of confessions by a suspect, they don't want that in there. So seeing all these things you can put in and putting their name, but as I always said, whatever the council and the community wants, I'll do. I can write it anyway. Like I said, we got a couple of options. We could not use the names and just put a man, a woman, whatever. We can stop doing it completely. We can, I'm good with anything you guys want to do.
I like, I like the fact that you report it.
Yes.
You do post it. But yeah, let's.
What do you say? Local man, local woman, visitor, local visitor, a male visitor, female visitor? And then we're going to assume.
So you do want to know the difference if it's a resident or a non-resident?
And then we'll assume they're all, we'll have to assume they're all over 18, correct? Because these are adults and you can't put anything. Oh, you can put a.
No, I can, no. It could be juveniles then.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Put it.
I just can't use the juveniles name.
Okay. So male juvenile, female juvenile?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. However you'd like it, we'll do.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds good?
Just a couple of comments. I, I actually had so many conversations on this because I knew we had talked about it once before. But I do want to clarify, Sarah, that is an incorrect statement, that names are put out all over LA County. And just in a brief, because I didn't print anything, but just in a very brief 20-second search on Google right now, I'm looking at the daily booking report for Santa Monica Police Department, which lists the name, the birthday, the sex, race, and primary charge. So it is actually, it is actually factual statement that there are names put in other newspapers and it is issued in some cases by the police department themselves. That being said, I don't have a personal stake whether or not somebody's name is or isn't in the paper. I would like to show whether it is an island resident versus a visitor to the island. But one comment that has been very prevalent through all of the conversations is that I struggle to agree that assuming names in the paper is a race-related issue. Of the barrage of logs that I've pulled all the way back to 2014, including a paper in 1962 that I found that had police activity in it, there is no particular descent of a name that is more prevalent than any other based on what one would assume that a name is.